What your concerns are for the traffic, because I think first and foremost, all of us that live in Manio feel like the traffic is a huge concern. What is your feeling about the increased traffic flow that you would be putting into that tight space?
Yeah, I think it's a good question. I mean, because I know the neighbors there are concerned with that. I think just people in Manio are concerned with that. We certainly would be too. This is a property that we plan to hold and manage for a long time. So issues that are created that are not solved would also impact this property as well. I think that needs to be looked at deeper. I think that whether it's a town investment or a combined, I mean, you know, there's parts of the town that are going to have issues with traffic. I'm looking at a property that has certain development potential. And now we're going down to the 22 units. We're following all the rules that I understand and that have been explained. So we're going down that path. I think outside the traffic concerns which are legitimate. We're trying to do a nice development that is on a commercial property and again, we're following the rules. I know that DOT, what Melissa shared with me, is going to require as part of their approvals when it goes into further site planning and all the storm water. At some point, we're going to have to address their concerns and get a traffic study done. And I'm for that. And any recommendations that can come from that.
I've got a question on something you just said. You said that you haven't ruled out the 44-unit development. If we're supposed to be approving this tonight, but you haven't ruled that out, are we shooting at a moving target here?
Well, I want to tell you that to be upfront here as well. I could have chose not to say that. But it's something that I feel more confident with this one because of the way the ordinance is written. There's a reason, there hasn't been any inclusionary housing in the multifamily side since the ordinance was written 15 or so years ago. I think it's very, very difficult to do that. I always have just a general from being a builder, developer here. I mean, that is certainly a huge issue. The reason I bring this up because a special use permit, there's still a lot more development we need to do. And studying and architectural and it's going to be, even with this, it's going to be some time involved to really plan this out to the next level. And no, I haven't ruled that out entirely. I mean, it would be at my cost and it would potentially come up later. So I just wanted to put that out there. That is something that we may continue to work on. But certainly as of right now, you're deliberating on the current application.
The units are rentals, correct?
Yes, they are rentals. The plan is, you know, we haven't decided exactly, are they vacation rentals? Are they gonna, you know, are they going to be sold? Are they going to be long-term, some of them? It may be a combination. I think we certainly want to leave those options open and continue to see the best path for that.
But that's better than just the integrity of Manio. When you come across that bridge and look, that's the first thing you see is representative of the town. So what safeguards will you put in place to maintain that integrity?
So, you know, we've gotten into some of the architecture and what we're doing because to be able to really look at the site plan effectively, you want to know somewhat of the end product, what you're looking at. You know, we certainly would have to come back here and show the architecture. I can tell you right now, our plans are to do these very nice. And these aren't, you know, even though we need it, you know, they're not low price point rentals. And there's going to be an association, whether we own them or not rent them, they're going to be, you know, definitely, we want to protect that investment and make sure that it's maintained well. We're going to also be concerned about anything from safety to security. We're definitely incentivized on to do that. But as a personal thing, I also want it to look very good, just as a representation. And it's going to have to come in front of the boards again, all those details. But I'm proud of where the direction is going and this is going to be more luxury than the whole community is what we're looking at.
So you have considered storms here and all that kind of, because with the storms that we had recently, those ditches were overflowing.
So Mike could elaborate more on that, but we're going to have to meet very strict state storm water rules. It's something we're going to require to do. And it's certainly a concern of ours as well. I think there's some pretty strict rules from the state side that we couldn't just run off this property, the water. We have to be able to contain the water and the storm water within the site. And Mike, maybe you can elaborate on some of those things.
Mr. Gupta, on the drawings that I see, I can only count two fire hydrants. Is that, am I correct in that? And there's none back that would be close to the marsh if the marsh ever caught on fire.
This would probably be more of Mike's question on that.
And while he's looking at that, there's also, I count six dumpsters, but there are two pads of three each. Is that enough dumpsters for that whole development?
You know, I can personally only judge from some of the stuff we've done. I don't know if there's, again, this is kind of an engineering thing, I believe, you know. Again, Mike can touch on that right there. We definitely want sufficient dumpsters. We have 96 apartments, two and three bedroom mostly in Kill Devil Hills. And I believe we have four or five, maybe I think there's four dumpsters for that. Two on one side and two more we added. So looking at that with six, I felt with the 22 units in the commercial, it made sense to me, but you know, we definitely don't want trash issue either.
Sure. Just one other thing. Has anybody contacted the Roanoke Island Fire Department to see if their fire engines are going to be able to fit in this development? Especially the large ones, will they be able to make the turns and if there's cars parked in the parking lots?
Yes, sir. No, those are all three good points. So we have been meeting with Chief Kovacs. And he has coordinated our effort to, first, we had to determine what the available fire flow was within this, for the site.
Mr. Strater, could you just get closer to the mic? It's for the home audience too. Thank you.
So we've determined what the available fire flow is for this particular site. And there's a lot that goes into that, but basically it's, we've tested all hydrants within 1,000 foot of this site. And there are quite a few. But basically, that determination, in addition to finding out what the needed fire flow is for this proposed development. So you have the available fire flow, that's what's in the existing system. Then you have the needed fire flow for the proposed development. Basically, we have to ensure and demonstrate that our needed fire flow is within the available fire flow. And you can do that based on what's in the existing system and then also proposing additional hydrants to provide the supplemental needed flow. So what you saw is correct. There are two proposed new hydrants, but that's not the only two hydrants that can provide flow for the development. And then, well, let me go ahead and hit on that. Your question about maneuverability. So yes, we had to demonstrate maneuverability. So we were provided the fire apparatus template. What, you know, what apparatus would serve the town and serve this development and demonstrate maneuverability within the site. And basically anywhere, each, all portions, exterior portions of the structure have to be reached within 150-foot hose length. So wherever that fire apparatus has to get, that firefighter has to use no greater than 150-foot hose length and be able to access that hydrant. So yes, all of the fire requirements have been looked at thoroughly. So it satisfies the fire requirements. And then as far as the refuse, that's actually, what Sumin said is correct. But when it comes to refuse, it's all about frequency of pickup. So the proposed number of dumpsters can suffice based on the frequency of pickup.
close to the neighborhood, that brings up another point.
Oh, but to that, while we're talking about dumpsters, I will note that I believe we discussed that in one of our meetings, that the dumpsters at similar developments that Mr. Gupta has are dumped at a higher frequency than the two times a week they would be dumped here.
One of the other things in the zoning, it says, 91, it says, maintain or enhance the value of adjacent property or be a public necessity. Is your development going to enhance the property values of Peninsula Isle?
I mean, it's hard to answer that. You know, we, from a town perspective, we think that, you know, we are from a land use plan of this promoting commercial on the ground level with residential above is something we're doing on this right here. We, you know, we came in here, if you remember, last year was to change it to the 72 units and go to the 18, you know, the request was, then it was inclusionary houses. Now, we've really just are following the rules. That's allowable, 22 units, commercial on the top. You know, I don't have a formal study to say the either way. I'm hoping that we won't be a detriment because we want to do something nice and we want there to be a nice kind of coming into it. We want to produce some additional office and retail space for the future of Manio. And you know, we think there's some rental need for rental units. Now...
Thank you.
Got a question for Michael. On Sheets 1 and 2 of your drawings, you show the infiltration basin for the stormwater. And then on Sheet 8, you show a pile-supported structure over top of half of that stormwater infiltration basin. What's going on there that's not shown on the plan?
So, there is, there's at least that one structure where that is infiltration. And the state has reviewed and approved basically infiltration underneath of one of those structures. We did need to provide, we needed to provide access because it has to be maintained. So, an operator or equipment can access the entirety of that infiltration basin.
But it showed, you know, the drawing on Sheet 8 shows the building halfway over that infiltration pond. And on Sheets 1 and 2, it's just showing that pond wide open.
You're referring to Building E?
No. Yeah, it's between Building G and F.
Okay, all right. So, there's two things we're looking at. So, the basin between F and G, that basin is entirely outside of the footprint of any structures.
Right.
But if you look over to the south, southwest of Building E, there's another infiltration basin. There's multiple infiltration basins on this site. The infiltration basin at Building E is what the detail at the bottom of Sheet 8 is reflecting. Because that particular infiltration basin does extend underneath of part of that structure. In fact, we, on Sheet 1, we're trying, we have a dashed polyline that's trying to show the extents of that infiltration basin. So, you can kind of see it going underneath of E and outside of E.
It's not labeled on Sheet 1. I see it on Sheet 2 now. But on Sheet 1, it's just, there's just a dotted line that's not labeled.
Yeah, you can see it. You can see it pretty clearly on Sheet 2.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
No, we have not.
Just, if I may ask one other thing. Have you thought about putting some EV charging stations in?
So, we're thinking about that in general through future developments. And it's something that I think would make sense nowadays. I would say, it's not something we've talked about. But I would say that makes good sense.
Yeah, there's more and more.
Yeah. Yeah. And if I can add, I mean, this, we're going to have to do a lot more site planning and come back with formal site plans and all the, you know, so, but that's when we will look closely at stuff like that.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to ask for clarification on whether you intend to rent or sell when we, are you still considering?
Yeah, I just want to, I'm still considering both.
Okay.
You know, that's, that would be from an intention standpoint. I mean, I'm considering both from just a formality standpoint. But you asked about intentions. Our intention would be to rent. And really kind of have it as a commercial, residential with one ownership and kind of control over that. But I do want to add, that could change. And we haven't made 100% decision on that. That's the intention right now.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Make a comment to that. So, the inclusionary ordinance, we have determined doesn't apply in a rental situation. Now, the issue becomes that, and this is where I feel obligated to tell you all this so that you can consider this. We are, we are looking at this through the lens of it being rentals. If that were to change, then the inclusionary ordinance applies because it is more than five residential units. So, that is something for you all to consider as you're developing your list of considerations or things that might be conditions. Because if you approve these because it meets the standard, this site plan because it meets the standard of the ordinance, then later something changes and they become for-sale units, then an ordinance does apply that you all are not considering at this moment.
So, that would have to come back?
Something, I might defer to the town attorney on this, but...
Would that have to come back too, spin?
If it changes, if it changes, that's not what you are considering now. Right now, you're considering this without the inclusionary ordinance because they are rentals.
The ordinance isn't as clear on this as it could be. But this may be why there are two versions of the inclusionary ordinance. One is in the zoning ordinance and one is in the police power sections. So, I think at this point, it's reasonable to expect that if they begin to sell properties, portions of this property, that they will need to meet the inclusionary standards. To do that though, they would only have to have, I believe, 20% that are affordable. They wouldn't have, they wouldn't have to go up to the 44 or 34 or change it around. They'd just have to say, if we're going to do 22, then 20% of these must be sold at affordable.
If they make that change though, does it have to come back to us for approval one more time?
I would suspect so.
Do we want to have some board discussion before we move on with anything? I am, I'll just express that I'm a little uncomfortable with the vagueness of some parts of this.
I feel like we're shooting at a moving target here.
Agreed. It just seems every time you come in, it's, there's something a little different. And it would be nice if we'd come in with one plan and say, this is what we're going to do and we're not going to change it and vote it up or vote it down. But every time you come in, it's just, there's, like you said, a moving target.
May I address that?
Sure.
Please.
It has been a little bit of a moving target. And it was, again, one idea was to change some of the ordinance to allow for the 72 units or that. Then it was, okay, let's take what was approved and work within this right here. Because, and then it was discovered that the inclusionary housing wasn't used properly in that right there. So, then we moved on to this right here. And my plan was, we engineered it both ways. The plan was to say, what do you guys like better? Because we see value in the 44 inclusionary houses. We see, and it's okay if that didn't. Now, I always think, you know, at least from my thought, it was like, okay, let's give option for you guys to consider. What do you like better? Right now, our focus is this plan. There's no other plan. I would like to see this built out. We're looking at renting these units. And I believe we meet the rules of the ordinance and we understand there's some conditions on it. So, it has been a moving target. But now that I'm understanding more from hearing from you, and you know, I think we've gone, instead of the, we've decreased the number of units, we've kind of meet that. And this is the key plan that we would like you to consider. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say one more thing. I know. I can't, I find it hard to believe that this is going to be a multi-million dollar project and you don't have clue about how much you would, the price point on rentals, or even if they're on...
It's, I, it's not that we have no idea whatsoever, you know, on it. It's not like we haven't, but I just, you know, we have to look at that. I don't know when, we have a long time from now to get the architect, the site planning, everything done. And then, when we decide to build it or when we get that funded, it could be a year, two years out. And I was just hesitant to say, this is the pricing on it. I can tell you that it's going, we're doing, this is going to be more of a luxury. Costs are very high. And I don't see anything, we can't go into an affordable type of rental here. So, but what that exact pricing is, we do need, before I can confidently say, this is it, we just need some more time to look at that.
That would give us as landowners, that would give your neighbors, some idea of what you propose, of whether they are going to be luxury or not, if that matters.
They're going to come back again to the, you know, and I can, all I can tell you is we are planning to do luxury and I don't see any other way because things are so expensive, from the property to the construction costs, to all the infrastructure. Really going to have no choice but to do them at a higher price point. And I'm sorry, I can't answer your question more than that right there because I don't want to, you know, tell you something that I don't know. But the idea is to, again, follow the rules, see what we can do on this. And this is initial step. And then we have to continue to do a lot of architecture, a lot of other planning around this right here. But we can't go into that without understanding if this is approved.
All right, board members.
I think we need, I think we need, your plan looks great. I know it's a nice piece of land for you to develop. But my biggest concern is traffic. And I just can't see going any further until we get the traffic study so we actually know what's going to happen there. That's just my, my point of view. I know what, I know you're going to say, well, it's contingent of the traffic study, but I want to see the traffic study.
You know, it's about a $20,000 traffic study and we've, I'm just, we spent a lot of time on this plan right here.
I understand that.
And I don't, you know, before we spend that money, we want to get a gauge. Because it's going to be required by DOT. We're going to have to figure out whatever solutions there are. And I feel like this, we shouldn't be alone at that. I mean, this is a property that can be developed per certain rules. The traffic thing is a benefit for all of us to try to alleviate and figure out what solutions, they'll probably give some solutions and there may be some more. But it's hard to really go further into that without having any knowledge of what we can do. This allows, are we meeting the rules? So, I would really, you know, respectful way to request that to be a condition. And there's a lot more that has to happen in this thing to move forward at the time of actual site planning.
I think at this point, based on it meeting all the requirements of the ordinance, we don't have any choice but to approve it, but we can apply this list of conditions to it. That we will approve it based on the fact that the applicant obtained all necessary approvals by Dare County prior to the Board of Commissioners meeting and approving it. Applicant to obtain and provide a letter to the town from neighboring property owner Dare Development acknowledging that the roadway will count against their lot coverage and other zoning considerations relevant to Dare County prior to the Board of Commissioners meeting and approval. The applicant has to improve the landscape and lighting plan to include a similar uniform buffer as the neighboring CVS has along Highway 64 prior to the Board of Commissioners meeting and approval. The applicant must complete a traffic impact study. The applicant must make all necessary changes and recommendations made by the Preservation and Architectural Review Committee of the Town of Manio.
And this is before development would ever begin?
That's, yeah, before the Board of Commissioners would approve it.
And they'd have to act on the traffic study?
Yes.
So, that's your, is that a motion?
That's the motion.
Could you add the, excuse me, the Russell Twyford Road Peninsula, just something a little, a little landscaping in that area? I mean, it's kind of a open spot there with all the dumpsters and the pump. I mean, I know it's a tight spot.
I mean, look, we want this community to look good. Landscaping, anything. I know this is causing some people in the Peninsula some heartburn on this. And we do want to do whatever we can within reason to mitigate those things. So, maybe there's a condition that we have to work with the town on an acceptable overall landscape plan. On the backside as well, I'm happy to, if you want to add the front and the back, but you know, it's just, there's not a clear guidance there because there's a clear code for the front. I just want to make sure that there's within reason or something. Within reason, we're happy to work with the town staff to come up with an acceptable landscape plan.
Fields, we can just add that to the condition, along Highway 64, just put "and" along Russell Twyford Road.
Matt, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, DOT has to approve any traffic study that's done. They're not going to just accept it and say, oh, you did a traffic study, fine, go ahead and do it. They're, they're going to review it and they're going to say, no, this works and yes, or yes, it works or no, it doesn't work.
And they said we have to do the traffic study. DOT said it has to be done.
Russell Twyford Road, the traffic study must include, it'll be the whole.
Oh, yeah. Well, part of, I mean, the big issue now is coming out of Russell Twyford, 64.
They'll have to have that driveway permit to access Russell Twyford. So, it will include the full scope of it.
Okay.
He the second.
Yeah. So, we have a motion on the table. Does anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, the next business, order of business is a zoning text amendment for duplexes. And Matt, would you like to give us some background on this?
So, upon a review of the current code, stat, notice of inconsistency and permitted residential uses of duplexes. Currently, it's only permitted in the B1 Village Business District. But we also noted that in R2... But we also noted that in R two, R two M, B one, B two, B three, and B four, currently, single-family residential is allowed and multifamily. And duplexes are currently excluded, but they are allowed in B one. So after discussion, the town attorney, we feel that it's just an oversight. So staff is submitting the tax amendment and recommends approval of the zoning tax amendment.
Does anyone have any discussion?
I don't see a problem with it because duplexes are more attractive than multifamily housing. And, you know, like I said, I think, like Ben said, I think it was just an oversight that the other areas weren't included.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we change zoning to include duplexes in R two, R two M, B two, B three, B four, and the other areas that it was already allowed, B one.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Okay, we have come to commissioner, or planner comments, planning board comments, I almost said commissioner comments. How, would you like to start?
Yeah, first, I'd like to congratulate Melissa on the town being considered a, you know, getting the approval.
Oh, for Main Street.
Main Street.
Yes.
Congrats, Michelle.
And also James Ayers in abstention, because James put a lot of work into that too, but congratulations on getting this approved.
Thank you.
Agreed, agreed. I would like to thank all of you for coming out. You make, you really make a difference. And it made the job harder tonight, but that's good. You should keep our feet to the fire. That's what you're supposed to do. So I, and we, we act within the code, it's what we must do. So, but we, I want you to know that it's wonderful to see so many people out here.
And we'll keep his feet to the fire.
And Fields, is it quiet night as usual?
Always.
Dave, do you have any comments? I love you for that.
No. Thanks for coming, everybody. And we will, it'll be a long process, but we'll make sure that it's done right, because we all live in Manio, so.
Thank you.
We do.
All right, with that, this meeting is adjourned.
We have no choice when they submit something that meets the, meets the ordinance.
Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I will move, will you adjourn?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.
All right, look at that. All right.